What's happening?
Hey, guys. Welcome, everybody, to the June 24th Planning Commission Meeting, City of Gushers. I now call this meeting to order, and I'll call for a roll call. Mel?
Pete McCackus?
Here.
Frank Blaine?
Here.
Bill Caris?
Here.
Jennifer Guthrie?
Here.
Brad Brown?
Here.
Richard Lamar?
Here.
Dr. Mary Long?
Here.
Jason Holt?
Here.
I'm on the apps. All right, thank you. We have a quorum. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the May 28th meeting.
Move for approval of the minutes of the May 28th Planning Commission meeting?
Second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Got one abstention.
Two.
Two, Jennifer?
I voted yes, approved, so two abstentions.
Yes. Okay, the first order of business today, before we get into our public hearings, the staff's asked me to have a deferral of two particular items. Edwin Oaks Preliminary Subdivision Platte, the first one. The Chair will entertain a motion to defer this first one.
I'll make a motion to defer Edwin Oaks Preliminary Subdivision.
Second? I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the second one we're going to defer is Articles 4, 9, 11, Zoning Text Amendment for ZTA 2502. Chair will entertain a motion.
I'll move to defer.
Second? All right, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Okay, we'll now open a public hearing. I'm going to let our public hearing chairman get up and tell us how the public hearing works with us, and explain the procedure. We'll get started. All right, Andy, it's all yours.
Thank you, Chairman. Just quickly, I'll go through the public hearing guidelines, since we do have several members of the public in attendance. City staff will present the application to the members of the Planning Commission, as well as the members of the public. The Chairman will entertain any questions from the commissioners. The Chairman will then recognize the applicant. If the applicant wants to address the commission, please come to the microphone at the front there and address the commission. Chairman will then open the public hearing. If any members of the public would like to speak, we ask that you come to the microphone also, state your name, address, and address any comments to the commission. The Chairman will then allow the applicant to address any comments if there are any. They'll close the public hearing, and then the Planning Commission will discuss, hold any discussion, and vote on the application. So the first item on the agenda is ZA 2521. It's a PUD amendment for Bonsecoor Village. The Retreat at Bonsecoor Village Homeowners Association, on behalf of the lot owners of lots 20 through 25, is requesting this amendment. The amendment proposes to bring those lots into the PUD with an underlying zoning of R1-4, which is residential medium-density, single-family district. Here's a location maps. So the lots 20 through 25 are at the bottom, or located south of Bonsecoor Village PUD. These lots are currently zoned R2, which is a single-family residential and duplex zoning. So they are currently not part of the Bonsecoor Village PUD. That is part of the request. Existing conditions, all of the lots, with the exception of Lot 22, are undeveloped. Lot 22 has a house constructed on it, and you can see that in the top left-hand portion of the screen. Obviously, the surrounding uses is surrounded by Bonsecoor Village and single-family residential uses. History of these lots, back in 2005, these lots were included in the original Bonsecoor Village PUD. They were designated T5 Urban Center. So they were originally, again, originally part of the PUD in 2005, when that development came, kind of was initiated. In November of 2012, the City Council removed those lots from the PUD and rezoned them to R2, which is a single-family and duplex zoning district. That was at the request of the owner of the lots at that time. So again, the existing zoning is R2. I've already covered R2's allowed single-family and duplex uses. And you see the R2 at the bottom of the, kind of the bottom portion of Bonsecoor Village there. Land use plan is designated to use as residential medium-density, six to 10 dwellings per acre. So the applicant's, the reason for the request is to remove the ability to build duplexes on these lots. The HOA, as well as the lot owners, do not believe that duplex uses are in keeping with the current character of Bonsecoor Village, so they would like to bring these into the PUD with an underlying zoning of R1-4. R1-4 only allows single-family residential uses, will only allow single-family residential uses on these lots. All of the area and dimensional regulations will remain unchanged. There is kind of a specific area and dimensional regulations for these lots. When they are rezoned, that kind of, that mirror the existing setbacks in building coverages allowed in Bonsecoor Village, so they're significantly different than the R1-4. They will keep those area and dimensional regulations, not only for a couple reasons, so that the existing house there that's built won't be affected by this rezoning, as well as any future development of the lots. If this is approved, the lots will be subject to the covenants and restrictions of Bonsecoor Village, and they'll have access to the amenities, such as the pool area and common areas in Bonsecoor Village. Staff supports the PUD amendment, basically because restricting these lots to single-family uses is in keeping with the overall kind of development concept of Bonsecoor Village. The lot sizes, the current lot sizes comply with a minimum lot size of the R1-4 zoning district. Again, we're keeping the same area and dimensional regulations as currently is established. And once again, these lots were originally part of the Bonsecoor Village PUD when it was originally approved in 2005. So staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the PUD amendment, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Andy, you said it was, you said it was previously, go back to the previous, the page before this one. Lots 25 were originally a part of Bonsecoor Village. Did they, they're not part of it once it got developed, or?
So originally, Bonsecoor Village was owned by a certain development group who platted a lot of these lots, and, you know, it was hundreds of acres. That development group went under, and when the economy kind of went down there in 2008, 2009 timeframe, a portion, portions of Bonsecoor Village were purchased by another developer, who, including this section, as well as some of the portions of Bonsecoor Village that were located on the north side of Waterway West Boulevard. At that point in time, in 2012, they rezoned pretty much all of the land that they bought from the original developer. So at that point, when they rezoned, it came out of the PUD. So that's the reason this is not inside the PUD today.
Will they have to go by the same building restrictions as the other houses in the suburb?
So the building restrictions are similar, because when it was rezoned, and when the plat, when a subdivision plat approved, was approved, they, basically, was conditioned upon setbacks being similar to what is allowed in Bonsecoor Village. So we're not changing any of that with this rezoning request.
Thank you very much. Anybody up here have a question?
Yeah, Andy, I just wanted to confirm that all six of the lots in question have been involved in the conversation and are on board with this.
Yes, sir. They, so what we require is, we require that, in an instance like this, the Homeowners Association made the application, but they included signatures from every homeowner, or I mean, lot owner, that they agree with this proposal. And I've spoken to a couple on the phone, just to confirm that. So as far as I know, they are all willing to do this and signed off on it.
All right, thank you. Andy, as part of the PUD, is there the ability to subdivide these lots even further, or will they maintain the minimum 11,000 R1-4 requirement?
If it's zoned to R1-4, it'll have to maintain the 11,000 square feet minimum lot size. So I don't think any of these would be large enough to subdivide them.
Right. Okay. Good question. Okay. Any other questions up here? All right, is the developer here?
Need to come to the microphone, sir.
In case any of us have questions for you, sir, we appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm Virgil Beatty, live at 468 West Canal Gushers. My only question is, the people that live there now, were they, when they bought their houses, were they under the impression that those lots would not be built on? Would that, they have thought that'd be a common area, or anything like that?
No, sir, those are platted resident, well, right now, they're platted lots that allow duplex and residential development.
Okay, well, I just had that question, because, you know, if I had moved in and was thinking that it wouldn't be built on, I would...
Okay. Good question.
I'm good.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, hold on just a minute, hold on a minute. Okay, I'll now open up the hearing for the public hearing. Come on up, sir. Identify yourself.
My name's Jason Hans. We own the lot 23A, or 23, which is one of the lots. The question was about being able to subdivide it, and the reason why this has all been done is because we want to subdivide ours instead of not making a duplex. That's why this whole thing was agreed upon. We bought the lot so we could have two different, we already had the lot, the duplex engineered, loan, lost all that money, and by persuasion of the POA, we all talked and said it'd be better if we split the lot, put two houses on it, which if you split the lot, it's bigger than any other lot. Each lot's bigger than any other lot in the neighborhood. So now we're hearing that we can't, and it's not big enough. So this kind of goes against everything we talked about and planned.
It's not the application that was received.
But that was the understanding through everybody. I mean, Alan Cox came down here and talked. Now we're splitting it up, so I'm not, I'm trying to understand how it got switched to now I've got to build a single, one house on a big lot, and R2 would able, you're able to be two houses, right?
So R2, you couldn't, you could not build two houses, you could build a duplex.
That's what I'm saying, though. We're doing now to go, we're going to R2, is that correct?
Going to R1-4, underlying zoning, which is, so the R1-4, the minimum lot size is 11,000 square feet. There was not a request to modify that minimum lot size.
So which way should we go with this now? Because that was the whole, that's the whole reason we're actually the lot that got this to be voted on to go to duplex.
It would be between the lot, the lot owners and the HOA. I mean, I thought this was all...
Well, this, that was the whole thing.
All settled when, you know, we spoke to the representative of the HOA a couple times and...
They're, they're under the impression, too, that it would be broken up into two lots, because they don't want a duplex. I mean, the duplex was agreed upon, I mean, I could have just went and built a duplex, because the city had already approved it, plans were approved. They turned it down because they didn't think it conformed with the neighborhood. Now, we tried to, we lost $25,000 so far with plans engineering, a loan that didn't go through of closing, so we could, you know, make everybody happy by splitting the lot up. And those two lots would conform with all the rest of the lot size. Actually, they would be bigger than all the rest of the lots in the neighborhood if you split it in half.
My recommendations, you get with the HOA and submit an application that represents exactly what you guys want to do. I mean, we've received an application to restrict these lots to single-family and underlying zoning of R1-4.
We don't be able to vote on this today, then.
So, yeah, I would recommend if...
So what would be their, Pat, like, what would be their request?
Their request would...
For to be able to subdivide?
They need to, they need to work with them, work amongst themselves to determine how big a lot size they can get, and, and, instead of R1, R1-4, maybe R1-5, underlying zoning, underlying zoning. But I don't think even R1-5's going to accomplish what you guys want. You would need to probably just...
What's the minimum square footage for R1-5?
8,000 square feet.
8,000?
And there's some like 11,000 square foot or 12,000. So you need to get with...
How many square feet's your lot?
I'd have to go back. I mean, it's...
They range from 12,000 to 18,000 square feet. They need to get together and just come up with exactly what they want to do.
Yeah, because they're all, I mean, that was the, the problem is, is I've kind of sat by idle and just tried to help out as much as I could with the, with the POA president. And so I'm kind of sitting in the back, I'm not, you know, I'm...
Yeah, you need to get with them and determine exactly what you want to do. I can help you, but...
Okay.
So you just heard this here at the meeting?
Yeah. I mean, but everybody's talked about, we're going to split it up. They'd much rather have two single dwellings sitting there than a duplex. And so we just canned everything and tried to work with everybody, so that's...
So if they are absorbed by the PUD, can the PUD be opened back up to then re-plot these six lots in the PUD?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if, once it's zoned PUD, you can create your own regulations. Like, if they want smaller lot sizes than R1-4 or R1-5, you can do that.
Subject to City Council approval.
Yeah.
So that's another avenue that they...
Yeah, they can, you can get to where you want to go. We just have to know exactly what you want to do. I might, I had the understanding, you just want to go R1-5, restricted to single-family residential, no duplexes, so...
But I'd rather do that to where we know when we're all going into this and get approved, even if it takes a little longer. We've been waiting on it for about a year and a half now, so...
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Let me just, so another challenge with splitting the lots is, so right now, all those lots do not front on a public street. They front on an alleyway. We have regulations that require that, in order to subdivide a property, you've got to front on a minimum, you know, 40 or 50-foot public right-of-way. So there's another challenge that would have to be overcome to split the lots.
My name is Jim Hawkins. I'm president of the Homeowners Association, and I had a plan to speak, but I just, because it come up, I just want y'all to know that the homeowners are very much in favor of this. This is going to be a benefit to our subdivision, because we're getting rid of duplexes and we're getting single-family. So we're very supportive of this, and we have had discussions about splitting, splitting the lots, and I didn't know this was a particular thing that was going to come up, but even those lots divided will be larger than the lot that I live on. So there still will be, that will fit within the, the PUD community, and it will be a great addition, and we would urge that y'all support it.
So, so if they're being, the request here is to be brought into the PUD as it is now, and then it has with an underlying zoning of R1-4, I'm just confused, if we're, if they want to be brought into the PUD, into the existing zoning, would that be an issue other than the driveway?
So the way our ordinance reads is, a PUD, PUD overlays an underlying zoning. So they have to declare an underlying zoning when, when they rezon the property and bring it into the PUD.
So with the PUD?
The original PUD, I don't know, it's, it was probably approved over, under a different zoning ordinance. I mean, I think this, this dates back to when we had what's called an RPC, which is a residential planned community with completely different regulations. But today's regulations, they have to declare a zoning district for the under, to have, for the underlying zoning. You can make modifications to that zoning through the PUD amendment process. So they can, they can get there, potentially, but we just need to know exactly what they want to do. It's my opinion, I was under the assumption they just wanted to restrict it to a single-family. R1-4 is appropriate. Obviously, they want to do a little, something a little different than that. I can help them get there, but we're not there, obviously.
The way I'm seeing this, we need to turn this down. I mean, not approve this if they're going to want to change to the PUD thing, correct?
Well, I think you can just table it, postpone it, or, you can postpone it, and we can work with them between now and the next meeting to get it exactly, get the request exactly right.
You think we could get it on the next meeting?
Yeah, we should be able to.
Does anybody else would like to talk to this issue before I close the public hearing? Okay.
So for clarification, is it better for them to withdraw this application, or is it better for us to defer it? It would be better for them to withdraw this application and then come back with a new application to the city, I think.
That's fine, that's fine.
Whatever, whatever is cleaner, but that way you don't have this already...
If they withdraw, do they have to go through any notification processes? You have to wait until September, or the next deadline's July 7th, and that's going to be for the August meeting, so you're adding more time.
So if we defer it, is that the quickest?
That's the quickest. I would postpone it, too. That's fine.
They'll postpone it.
It's probably easier for our process as well, honestly.
The Chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we defer ZA 2521 until a future Planning Commission meeting.
Second? Got a motion and a second? Any discussion?
Name the meeting? My motion will be till the next regular scheduled Planning Commission meeting.
Which is...
July 22nd? Does that sound right?
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. This is been deferred. All right, our next, let's see here, is ZTA 2501, signed amendment zoning text amendment.
Good afternoon. So the, actually, this item, ZTA 2501, signed amendment zoning text amendment, was postponed from your last month as well. It covers, well, I'll just go through the, the slides again, as kind of a recap. I will point out, if anyone's here interested in the potential changes to the vacation rental signage, we, we've actually taken that off of this request, so feel free to stay and listen to what we're doing. We're not, we're not going to be changing the, or making the proposed changes to the vacation rental signage. So in 2015, the United States Supreme Court passed a, or decided a landmark case called Reed versus Town of Gilbert. The quick synopsis is, the Town of Gilbert, Arizona, was regulating signage based on the message that it conveyed. So for instance, this church here, the Good News Presbyterian Church, that's Mr. Reed, Pastor Reed standing there, he could only put up his signs for a shorter amount of time than, say, a commercial operation could. They felt like that wasn't right. It worked its way all the way to, you know, US Supreme Court, and they decided nine to zero that you're right. The Supreme, the First Amendment does not allow you to regulate this speech based on the content or the viewpoint. That, that made cities across the nation have to update their sign orders, so we're just now doing that now. So within the definitions, our current zoning ordinance defines a lot of signs based on the content. For instance, a directional sign, right, well, in fact, I'll show you the language in just a moment, but, but we, we use the content of the message to define what kind of sign it is. So we're, we're looking to change that, and this is really just to accomplish compliance with First Amendment and US Supreme Court case law. We're not really looking at making any substantive changes right now. That, those may come later. We do, I mentioned, we're not, we're not changing the signage regulation for vacation rentals. We are just changing the way we define it, is defined like two different ways, so we're just consolidating that one way. So just what the rental is, is how we're defining it, not the signage. Again, the purpose is, our goal is to narrowly tailor our ordinances to achieve the governmental purpose, traffic safety, aesthetics. We're not going to regulate based on viewpoint or content. We make clear, and just, again, this is based on case law, that wherever commercial content's allowed, non-commercial content is also allowed in the same or combination. It conformed to Reed v. Gilbert. There was one in, that was 2015, in 2022, City of Austin versus Reagan National Advertising of Austin, was a billboard case, and actually, that allowed the Supreme Court first... was a billboard case. And actually, that allowed, the Supreme Court further clarified their position on the viewpoint restriction. The Austin v. Reagan was about off-premise signs. So it was believed that, say, you have a billboard that's advertising, you know, whatever, a restaurant somewhere that's sitting out on the interstate. Austin, Texas felt like they could still regulate that. The billboard company said, no. The Supreme Court said, yeah, you can. That's not really content regulation. That's more of just, you're looking at the message to determine the locational aspect of it. So. And there's a, a long list of other court cases that we, that we looked at. The city employed an outside legal counsel who kind of specializes in First Amendment and sign law to look at this for us. It also updates some of the permitting procedures. So right now, it's kind of written, it's kind of loosely, the, the review process is you can turn in your application and then, you know, staff will get to it when we do. At least that's what the regulation says. We don't do that. But the, the, the regulation does now put in a defined timeline. So again, due process. It, it guarantees that your applicants will get an answer within a certain timeframe. And then, you know, appeals can go to the board of zoning adjustment. We updated or proposing updates to some of the exempt signs, so temporary signs. What we call nameplate signs. Again, these aren't, today they are, but in the proposed language, the, these sign types, nameplate signs, real estate signs, directional signs, et cetera, are really just defined by their size or their location, not their, not their message. And then updated some of the prohibited signs as well. So this is a new slide from last month. Commissioner Brown kind of pointed out, rightfully so. As presented, it's a little hard to tell what was the old language, what's the new language. So duly noted, we'll, we'll kind of change how we, we present these in the future. But as an example, we were talking about the current or the directional sign. So hate to read to you, but I will. So the current zoning ordinance defines a directional sign as a sign intended to direct movement. It may indicate entrances, exits, parking areas, similar on-premise locations. So again, that's kind of a content restriction. So so, you know, directional signs, one of these that you see at the drive-through entrance that says, drive through this way or parking lot this way. Great signs, we need those. The health officials knows where they are, but Supreme Court says, well, you're regulating that based on the content. So, so now the proposed definition of directional sign is simply a freestanding sign within thirty feet of an entrance or exit to a parking location. You can put any message you want on there, and it's going to have some restriction on size. But that's, so we're still allowing a sign that you could place at your entrance, but we're not telling you what it, the message has to be. Again, but back on the directional sign. So today's ordinance says may not include logos. The entry identification size provided at the main entrance to residential non- residential development. Again, that, that has some restrictions based on the content or the message. So the proposed language is, again, simply east directional signs shall be limited to two square feet in area, relatively small, and three, three feet and a height of three feet. So again, it's, we're defining where it can be, how big it can be, but not the message that will be indicated or it could be indicated on the sign. So again, not, not necessarily proposing substantive size or shape or manner or time restrictions right now, but just clearing up the potential for regulating based on content. That was the end. Again, like I said, we, we spoke about vacation rental signage. We're going to continue working on that. We're going to speak more to some of the real agencies just to make sure they have a better understanding. We're going to talk to, you know, more members of the community. So that's, that's not gone. It's just we pulled it off of this month, just so we had a little more time to work on it. So proposal before you, today's meeting is just simply really just changing some of the definitions and requirements to remove the concern for content regulation. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
What we're voting on today is just its content?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Not actually changing anything yet. So you talk to everybody?
Oh, as far as the vacation rentals go, yeah, we're, that, that'll be a later meeting and we'll, we'll restart that process.
Okay, all right. If I got any questions?
Hoping not to open a can of worms. Can you, can you go back to the exit signs? So proposed sign directional, freestanding place within thirty feet of an entrance to or from an establishment or parking location. You say you can't regulate the content, but does the sign have to be related to the actual business? Or can it be happy birthday to my mom? I mean, what, because there, there, it could get out of hand if, if this is, if any sign of any content of any, anything can be placed within thirty feet of an entrance or an exit from an establishment in a parking location, if there's no tieback into being for some type of a purpose. And I don't know, maybe that's the regulation that we can't get around.
Yeah, that would be. Now, the, again, the Supreme Court allows some differentiation between on-premise versus off, off-premise. So that's, we make and explore that better. Now, certainly, if it's, if it's near a public street or anything, we're going to talk to the city engineer, make sure it's, is placed safely from like a site distance. And do keep in mind, these are limited to no more than three feet in height and two square feet in, in size. So yes, they could say happy birthday, mom or whatever, but it, it's not going to be a very large message.
And is there a time limit that those signs would be allowed?
No, well, th- these could be permanent.
So somebody could put a I love my mom sign permanently and at the entrance or exit to my place of business?
They could, yeah. Again, they, they can only do so many and so large. So, you know, that, then they would be giving up the chance to do a entrance this way, exit this way, drive through that, you know. So again, they're, they're kind of limited on size. So hopefully, I guess the idea is they'll utilize it to the best advantage. But, you know, they, they could say happy birthday, mom or something on it.
What, just question, this is limited to directional signs?
Well, just, just. Just this example. I mean, now, now in, in the, in your packet, it has a lot more. I didn't go through every single one of them, but like nameplate signs.
Their, their majority of the signs, when I remember, they're all small type signs.
Right, right, right.
In our current sign regulations, as far as I recall, like.
Correct, yeah.
E-tap signs for a business, signs at place, a lot of these are currently not required to be, have a permit right now because they're all very small in nature and I would think majority of the people don't even take advantage of a lot of these signs that are allowed, but they're just so small and incidental, you know, just like you say. Exit, entrance, a little nameplate, like a two square, square foot nameplate on your building, if it's business. You know, you already get a hundred twenty-five square feet of signage. You don't need another two square foot of nameplate.
What about putting in, in the right, uh, right of way? Are those permitted? A lot of times signs are taken down because they're in the right of way.
They shouldn't be in the right of way really ever.
A lot of people don't know where, exactly where the right of way is.
Correct, yeah. That's certainly, this time of year has been a challenge, I think, for our code enforcement is, is keeping signs out of the right of way. But yeah, in, in general, we don't allow, you know, the, the city may put a directional, you know, a city sign in the right of way, but as far as a, a private sign or you know, like that, it, it needs to be on their property, not, not in the city's right of way.
What about political signs?
Uh, good question. So that's one of the, the things that is going to be redefined as part of this proposed language. So I had to define it, but, but the way political signs are defined now is they're basically defined as campaign signs, political signs. That's definitely a viewpoint or content regulation there. So so again, we're removing that language. So, so within a certain timeframe before an election, I think a hundred eighty days, you can have really a little more allowance on your signage. Again, if it wants to say happy birthday, mother, or, or elect Mickey Mouse, you know, that's, the message is, is not what we're regulating. It's the size and, and location and, and kind of timeframe.
They have them a bit on the side.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Any questions up here? All right, I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody in the audience would like to come speak to this? Please feel free.
Yes, sir. Some related question. My name is Robert Sorrels. I live on Fort Morgan Road on Highway one eighty. Y'all deferred a couple of topics today. Does that mean to a later date?
Yes.
Or later in the meeting?
Later date. Later date, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, Mel, we'll close the public hearing. You entertain a motion.
Okay. We'll make a motion to approve the application ZTA twenty-five oh one, sign definition updates.
Second.
You have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion here.
And as a reminder to everyone here and everyone in the audience, this is a recommendation to council. So this will still go to the city council to, to potentially amend the zoning ordinance.
Another quick comment on that. Those sign regulations were drafted by a constitutional lawyer. So I would assume he knows what he's talking about.
So we're, we're in, we're in compliance with the Supreme Court, as you're saying.
After city council approval.
Send any complaints his way if we're not, I guess.
Okay, all right. Is anybody in the audience who would like to talk about anything now, now's the time to come up and speak? All right, other business, communications from staff? Anyone want to tell us, guys, girls, ladies? What, can somebody please tell me what, why they closed part of Fort Morgan? I'm, I'm not up to speed on what's going on there, the signs are. The twenty-fourth and twenty-sixth, Fort Morgan, something's going to be closed. Can you tell me what that is?
So it's sorry.
Canal Road, isn't it?
Canal.
It's Canal. It's Canal Road, east, east of, really east of tenth, East Tenth Street. Over where they're setting the new girders for the new Aldot Bridge. It's going to drop down, kind of right on the Gulf Shores, Orange Beach border. So they're setting those twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth, that section of canal is closed. So the detour route for that, you either need to go down to Beach Boulevard to get over to Orange Beach or up.
Fifty-nine to.
Codereach.
Thank you so much.
I learned the hard way this morning.
Okay. Okay. Anything from planning commission? Anybody from planning commission want to say something today?
Just a question for Mel. Did you get certificate copies from the recertification, capsule certifications? Yeah, I did not get an email from her. They did not, they did not send them via mail. They were going to email them and I did not receive.
So I don't have any certification.
I'd like to welcome our two new members of the planning commission. They've enjoyed our meeting today.
Thank you.
All right. Nothing else. You entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Second.
All right. Okay, guys, we'll see y'all next, next month.